Yes, and Nina's got the definitive list. I know we've got apologies from Lauren. Louise, do you recall any of the others?
What about the, what about the guy from the school, from Royal Latin?
I haven't heard from him. He didn't say we have apologies.
Right, okay. Howard has said that he'll have to leave pretty early because he's got a couple of other things on tonight.
Okay.
All right. Declarations of interest. We treat that as normal and if something rears its head that we're closely connected to, then declare it then, shall we?
It's obviously pretty obvious that the agenda item on Buckingham What's On is by me, under my personal role rather than my council role.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we take that as read, I think. Okay, can we go to the minutes of the last meeting? Is everybody happy with them? Anybody not happy? So can we agree them as being correct then? That'll be a yes.
I'll propose that.
Thank you. If, if nobody just said something, but just take it as unanimous, I think. Move on now to the terms of reference. Just before we started, I had a, Paul and I had a wee discussion in that the terms of reference still refer to us as a subcommittee when in fact we are and always have been a working group. So I'm suggesting that every reference to subcommittee be changed to working groups around these. Other than that, I've got no suggested changes to make. Has anybody else got any?
No, you can still hear me even though you can't see me at the moment, can you?
I can't see you, no, Mary, no.
No, I've switched you off while I'm fiddling around trying to find my power because I'm going to lose power in a second.
Okay. Do I take it that everybody is happy, A with the change I've just suggested and B with the rest of it being unchanged?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Moving on to the action list then, there's quite a few actions to consider this week, this meeting. We start with the second one down. Paul, where we're going to invite local business owners?
Yes, so I've had a couple more suggestions from Lauren, which I haven't yet followed up. The ones I initially haven't still haven't responded again. So whether anybody has any other suggestions?
Right.
Who were the new ones, Paul?
I knew you were going to ask me that, Mary. I will find them in a second.
I think it was one of the guys from the industrial estate. There's a name I can't remember.
But they were business rather than retail, were they?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. On the background that you're retail.
Sorry, who?
So here's the list from Lauren. She suggested we ask Stratford Tools, she doesn't have a contact there. Someone from Whitepack. Or Matt Harris of MJ Harris Flooring.
That's the one I was thinking of.
They were the three.
Right. Well, shall we just ask them to see if at least one will come on board? Yes, okay. Mary, are there any other retailers that might want to come on?
Um, not that I know of at the moment.
Can you think of any that would be worth approaching?
Um, well, I've tried approaching them to get comments to feed in via me and despite the fact that you seem to imply that it's me that's stopping people come to my shop. I don't think it's me that's stopping them giving me comments, so. I can put the question out there if anybody would like to join in and see if I get any more response that way.
Okay, if you could do that, Mary, that would be good, I think. I haven't got any in mind particularly, but with, you know, the restaurant trade is fairly strong in Buckingham. Except for evening meetings, of course, they're going to be pretty busy, which is a bit awkward, but leave that with you.
Yes, they are the most responsive as well. Other than just one or two others, which I'll come on to later on my little update.
Okay, moving down to the Bart Bus then, we've done that one. Then the next Bart Bus one is bus to the town centre, the shuttle to the town centre for discount and a cup of tea and this sort of stuff. I guess that's kind of on hold with the COVID-19 stuff, is it?
Yes, unfortunately we've not been able to do any, any progression of that at the moment. We're still, we're still working on getting the vehicle acquired, so.
Yes. Yeah. And so far as the next.
We can come back to that when things start looking a bit more.
Okay, well, we'll leave it on there then. As far as the next one's concerned, we've sorted out a bit of a discount for the Bart Bus, but only when the museum opens and the likelihood of that happening in the next two or three months is pretty remote. We've got some ongoing ones there. Which I don't think there's anything else to say on.
With the town walking, the town walking competition, that was discussed by the Environment Committee, who noted that there haven't been many responses from other councils given lockdown. Would we be happy for that to just sit with Environment Committee now rather than us monitor what they're discussing on it?
I think so, yes. And then maybe if something gets going, we could come back in if appropriate. The Love Buckingham into an entity, well, we're kind of in Lauren's hands for that, so just leave it on there. And hope her absence tonight is either good news but not bad news. You're going to pursue funding with AVDC. I presume you've, you've given up with AVDC.
I'm now trying to work out how to pursue with Buckinghamshire Council, which I'm doing. They've appointed people on their community board in the last couple of weeks, so.
Right. The design and style guide we looked at, that's town plan officers looking at that. Diane.
She wasn't available this evening, so we'll invite her to the next meeting.
Okay, well, just, just leave her as an attendee until she gets here or as an invitee until she gets here, I guess.
Yeah.
The next one, the community, oh, it's the heritage app. We've got a report on that coming up in the meeting. Buckingham What's On, that's on the agenda and town centre reopening, that's kind of on the agenda as well, isn't it? So anybody had got anything else on the action report, action sheet?
Anything I was going to say, Paul, regarding the funding, is that something that could be brought up with the new community board?
Yes, well, sorry.
That sounds to be the place for it. But we don't know when that's going to meet, do we?
But it has got a date in the diary, actually.
Oh, yeah? Oh, great.
Yeah, it's, the first meeting's on the 7th of July.
Well, perhaps, Paul, we could make sure John Harvey's aware of that and maybe put a bid in.
It's John Harvey.
No, not John Harvey, Mark Cole.
Sorry, Mark, oh, Mark, yeah.
Yes, please do.
Goodie up. Okay. Buckingham What's On, Warren, you kindly circulated your report this afternoon. Do you want to add anything to it? I'm assuming everybody's received it and had a good look through it. Paging Warren White.
Indeed, yes, I'm trying to call it up. So hopefully you've all had a chance to, to see the, see the report. I thought it was just a chance really to share what, what I've been up to over the last couple of years and what has started off as a fairly small, part-time services has actually become quite, quite popular and particular part times of the year, it has been very useful. Particularly sort of Easter, Christmas, summer holidays, where people are looking for things to do and entertain family and that sort of thing. And what's become quite clear is that those people who know it exists have become quite regular at submitting their events and their activities, so it's become quite, quite good at highlighting stuff that isn't necessarily picked up by the newspaper or other social media outlets. Of course, COVID has been quite a challenge for what, what we can actually advertise. So I've used some of the spare capacity I've had to, to morph into the, the directory of shops and businesses that were offering delivery and takeaway that they didn't normally do. So, you know, businesses like Mary's that was doing delivery services right through to Prago, you know, closing to then reopening to a special takeaway menu, it has been really well received. I'm saying that with the things changing on Saturday onwards, I'll be winding that back down and then focusing again on events and businesses and tourist attractions in the vicinity that reopen. So when this was originally on the agenda, it was a slightly different time. But I think actually the, the role of Buckingham What's On is probably more important than ever in terms of trying to provide a focused location for, for events and special, special events and businesses relaunching to be able to advertise and be on the diary and be on the wall. I suppose the best, best outcome I'm looking for is wider knowledge of it. We're around 1600 followers, which is pretty good if you think about the population of Buckingham itself. Other network and other groups around the Buckingham area have a much broader membership, so I think we could maybe aim for 2000, 3000, which would cover the surrounding villages as well. And that's my next, next campaign really, is to try to broaden out the people's knowledge of it and know what's there to see. The posts, posts are seen by between 500 and 1000 people in general, so there's definitely an appetite to keep seeing what's going on. And certainly events at the town council organisers and various charities, they, they get very good coverage. Where they may get missed on some of the other pages where there's so much activity that they slip down the wall very quickly. The last point really is, is how to make sure that those events and activities are seen by even more people. The Facebook tool is, is cost effective. It is seen by a lot of people, a lot, seems to be a good proportion of the population do use Facebook. And being a page rather than a, a personality, it doesn't have to be, you don't have to log in to see it. It's, there's no membership, there's no subscribing to be a member to see it. So one of the things I've suggested in the paper is that some of the websites that promote Buckingham stuff might want to have a little window that promotes the, promotes the feed. So that people who aren't even, who aren't Facebook users could see the, the content as well. So that's probably enough really to say, and if there's any particular questions.
Well, one question, has it really been running since 2017?
Yeah.
I'm amazed. It doesn't seem that long.
Time has flown. It was also self-launched on Christmas 2017 to see if there was an appetite for it. And it grew very quickly from there. And then it was Easter 2018 and summer 2018 and before we knew it, before we knew it, it was, it was Christmas 2018 and we kind of plateaued during 2019. And you'll see the, the point about the trial in some newspapers, a printed version, which is a way of maybe reminding the whole of the town that it exists and something to think about post-COVID.
Right. Any comments then from others?
I can make a comment.
Please do.
How does the, or have you linked through with the new town council website? And their What's On type information? Is there a link through?
I have used the What's On to see if there's anything that I can add to the page, but I can put a link to the actual Facebook page on that.
Would that not be better than sort of pulling bits out and pushing them over?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to suggest because links through to an existing list that is updated means you only update it once rather than two places to update things. Soon as you start extracting and generating other lists, things can get out of sync. But links through are good because they are utilizing each other's work.
Yeah, that would depend on what it is though. So for something, there'll be, there'll be town council events that Emma will be putting together anyway and linking through. Other things will be, make more sense to link through, yeah, kind of work out as we go along.
I mean, the benefit of the Facebook page is that we can, we can promote a range of activities without stepping on the toes of the town council. So if there's anything that is a fundraiser or it might clash with the town council events, then Aussie Buckingham What's On can be, take the broader view because it can offer a range of activities for people to choose from. I suppose in an ideal world, it'd be lovely if Buckingham had one coordinated event diary. And that was something that the TIC wanted to do years ago. There was sort of the, the mythical town diary to make sure you planned your event to not clash with someone else's. And, you know, I'd be happy to, to work with that if that was still an ambition at some point.
The second question on the paper version, there are places like the Community Contact Magazine who are generating lists of What's On. Is there ways then of utilizing that distribution method rather than generating another paper?
Possibly.
Plus others, obviously, not just Community Contact.
I mean, the Community Contact one's an interesting one because they don't deliver to the whole of Buckingham. I've never seen it apart from when I pick it up from the shops. And I have reminded them if they want to cover Buckingham, they need to broaden their distribution, but they haven't. Whereas maybe MK18 has got very good coverage of the Buckingham area. The problem is that because they, because they use traditional prints and the way they deliver it, that the, the What's On can be quite delayed in getting out. So one of the, one of the challenges is, is trying to make the information as contemporary as possible and as comprehensive as possible. And some of the events that I've, I've advertised through Buckingham What's On may only actually be circulated to the public in sort of two, three weeks before the actual date because this is sort of a
Appreciate.
fundraiser and stuff. So it's always a challenge of the breadth of content you can create in a printed manner. The newspaper format does allow for a very quick turnaround, which is, is one of the reasons why I went down that route. But maybe one of the other circulated magazines might be interested in extending their content.
Anybody else?
The only thing, I think it's great, and Warren, thank you very much for, because you're always kind of reposting things about the university, which we really appreciate. But the only thing I was wondering is whether or not we've looked at other models and other towns and how they ensure that the community are aware of the events that are happening and whether or not there is anything that we can do to enhance what you're doing already to make it sort of more all encompassing, perhaps to have more footfall onto the site, that sort of thing. Are there things that are preventing people from getting to it, for example? That's the only thing I would, and then all of these things have probably been suggested before, but just springs to mind when the question.
There's always a challenge of information overload and where people turn to for, for information. And it's one of the reasons why I've not rushed into setting up yet another website, because I think that would just be, that would just get confused with all the other offers. I have, well, before I set up the site, I looked at various other town specific pages. Some have been a free for all where people could post all their own stuff and you end up with a very cluttered page right through to ones that only take sort of paid advertising, which then doesn't give you the breadth of activity that's happening in the town. So I've kind of gone for the middle ground where as, as long as it seems to be a, you know, reasonable type of activity, that's not devil worshipping or whatever, then I'm very happy to promote it, so even if it's something I wouldn't go to myself. But other people in Buckingham might find it interesting. And what some event organisers don't realise is that I, I do actually have, have a bit of editorial management on it. So rather than just posting an event as soon as it's launched, I actually manage the information onto it so that it's sort of what's happening this week, what's happening maybe later this week. And then adding the occasional date for your diary type stuff because the, this, the the ones that have been most popular have been the ones that people have gone to the website looking for What's On this weekend. Very rarely are they looking for stuff to put in the diary of two months ahead, despite the event organisers wanting to sell the tickets early. The ticket, ticket sale stuff I try to avoid because if it's, if it's been, if it's up the TIC and I do occasionally put links to that. But this is a happy meeting.
Anyone else? What do we, what do we think about this newspaper type version then? Good idea, bad idea? Supporting the recycling centres?
Well, before you rush into any good or bad, when we, when we were looking at doing one for the COVID, sorry, for Christmas rather, there were some opportunities to link it with Love Buckingham, that there could be some curated content and editorial, which would be a good way of showcasing some stuff as well as pure listings, so a sort of mix of What's On and shop local type stuff. I think that would be a really good model if we did go down that route, rather than just being a pure listings thing. The other benefit of a newspaper style thing is that you can have a, a page that can be stuck on the fridge or on your family notes board or whatever, so it's a good place for a whole cacophony of stuff to be listed for, say, the summer or, or winter season.
Is it something that, like the Buckingham advertiser can do a kind of pull out version of? Is that possible?
Or a wraparound?
Yeah, a wraparound or an inside sheet or page that they can pull out and do exactly what you just described, you know, put on your fridge type thing.
To be honest, one of the reasons why I set it up was because I thought the advertiser was very poor at local events. I mean, you just have to see there are five to see column, you know, very rarely is a Buckingham event part of that top five listings. You know, Golden Northampton or Golden Aylesbury, but not actually something in Buckingham. And because I'm not taking paid advertising in this format, I'm not sure how tempted they would be in that, but certainly something to look at, but I suspect they see the Facebook page as a, as a competitor rather than something they want to promote.
And it's got a very low circulation now, hasn't it, the advertiser?
It does.
About 6000, I think.
I just, I always worry about when you're putting newspapers and, you know, things that you put through the post, it's actually sustaining that because someone's always got to put that, that print together and, and work and it's quite time consuming. So you need somebody who's getting paid to do it really, to make it sustainable, which obviously Love Buckingham isn't that kind of paid service necessarily.
I mean, the other option is for a smaller circulation, that's, that's deposited in local, local locations, like the TIC and supermarkets and stuff, the library, where people pick up a copy. But I wouldn't see this as a monthly thing or a quarterly thing. I think realistically this is a seasonal thing. Which you do see quite often in sort of seaside towns and stuff where they do their summer What's On or their some, some major shopping towns are the winter, winter ones. Which is why I've kind of suggested that would be probably the best place to focus where there's so much going on, but people kind of don't know what's going on. And there's lots of charity events and, and Santas and all the rest of it that people would like to, like to make sure they get a chance to see.
Isn't, isn't one of the great advantages of the, of the page at the moment? That the, the, you know, so the Buckingham Town Council's promoting the kind of big set pieces and the big set pieces events that you have a good long time, lead time on are fairly well known. What's great about the Facebook page is that those smaller events and those visitor events, which often don't have that kind of lead time anyway, and get, get recognition. And as soon as you move into print, you're moving into a world of lead times and you're moving into a world of basically promoting the big set piece events, which are relative, you know, it's another, it's, you know, it's another way of telling people things that are largely well known already. And actually what's, you know, what's brilliant about it at the moment is the way that it's community fed. And, you know, you know, when someone realises they're doing, I don't know, a, you know, a VE day, for example, and they, you know, no one's talked about it and it's all coming together, then it's something that happens, you can do it three weeks ahead and that's plenty of time and, and that's sort of one of the great advantages. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm all, I'm all for staying digital. But I think in this example, it's, it is, it's an, it's an asset, the fact that, you know, that it can happen so quickly.
Yes, but that's because it's, it's focused, it's not obscured with a lot of chit chat and all the rest of it and other adverts and so forth. You can just pull it up, you can get the page to sort of come up on your bits and pieces. Yeah. So are we, are we actually saying no at the moment to the, to the written version? And we're not saying anything about it.
I don't think I'm saying no. I just think, I think it's coming with a word of caution about sustainability. I think if somebody feels they can do it and it's any additional information is a good thing, it's whether or not it can be continued and sustained.
Yeah.
I think I have one. Sorry, I was just going to say, I, I would, I would hesitate on that, sorry, Shannon. On the, on the side of no, unless there was a very passionate debate as to, you know, argument as to how it's going to be made to be realistic and to happen.
Well, there are two issues, aren't there? None the least of which is who's going to put the damn thing together and get it printed and distributed and all the rest of it. But, but the other thing is that, yeah, I think what you're getting at, Charlie, is concentrate on cool look, here's our summer events, cool look, here's what's happening over Christmas, that type of thing, rather than I don't think there's any intention to put it out as a, as a monthly or bimonthly regular thing, is there? Is there?
Not for me, no.
I mean, there are people that do this as a business in their towns and they, they do it and they sell their advertising. And, 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 you know, I know, I happen to have come across someone who does this for Bristol, bigger town, bigger population and has made quite a, a, a living out of it, but and there's probably, you know, if someone was feeling entrepreneurial, there's probably some decent kind of side income to be made doing this, but you, I think it would have to be taken by someone who was vested in it to do it financially. Warren, you are a saint for doing what you're doing at the moment. But, you know, unless you've got a sneaky way of commoditizing the, the Facebook page, which we don't know about, I suspect that it's done being done out of your goodness of your heart. And I, I think that for something to go on paper, it does need to become commercial.
Yeah, I think you're quite right, Charlie, but maybe I need to speak to your, your friend in Bristol.
The other side of the same coin, Charlie, is where's the money going to come from to pay for it?
Yeah, well, don't look, don't look at the community board for that, I'm afraid.
Is there, is there an opportunity to collaborate for those two events in the year with the Buckingham Town Matters article, so that you've got a wraparound of the Buckingham What's On just for those two events? Or do you prefer to keep the two completely separate?
From my perspective, I'm very flexible. I think there'll be some merit in it combined with something that people don't, you know, throw away instantly without looking at it. Yeah, it's definitely something to think about, but I think from what's been said around, around the table tonight, that I don't think there's any point rushing into a summer edition because I think actually it's, everything's so fluid at the moment, that'd be pretty pointless to try to fix that. But maybe, maybe just think about what might be useful for Christmas because I think a lot of businesses and a lot of charities will be relying on Christmas to be in a big, big opportunity for them. So there may be something we can do to really promote Buckingham at that time. And I'll certainly put my mind to that maybe as, as something to focus on rather than rushing anything for, for the summer season.
This does assume, doesn't it, that we're, we're kind of back to normal more at Christmas and that events can take place. Another, another sort of version could be staycations in the springtime about, and you know, they've unplugged this as a, plug Buckingham as a, as a tourist place while you sit in a hotel somewhere or the other. Paul, could we put this on TCNE agenda, do you think, about the collaboration on our wraparounds and bits and pieces?
Yes, is that TCNE? Is that CSG?
All right, well, yeah, try it on CSG, yeah.
So we'll put it on the Communications Strategy Group because they do the newsletters, so that'd be more that kind of logical thing. But I do wonder whether we should put something on TCNE if this group requests it about what are we doing about events or things around Christmas? Obviously we've got the Christmas light switch on, but maybe we do need to think about is there anything else the town council could do or work with others on in terms of events to get people into the town over the Christmas period?
Well, I, I think it would be good if we, if we could sort of publicise what the, the restaurant and hospital, I was going to say hostility, hospitality market is doing around about Christmas time. Because I think that they're, they've really been suffering. I mean, some are doing takeouts and this sort of thing, but they really have been suffering and they've furloughed god knows how many staff and so forth. So there's, there's another idea that you could put on there.
Yeah, and obviously we'll talk about the TIC website when we get down to it, but part of Emma's role with that will be to collect that kind of information, promote it through that website. And so it'll be gathering that stuff to do something, but then help promote it the way that we can.
Okay, if there's nothing else to say on this, I do think we ought to record a very grateful thanks to Warren for putting together this, this thing and sustaining it. It is probably one of the most useful Buckingham focused sites that we've got. Buckingham focused sites that we've got. Some of them are just getting a bit impossible at the moment, so thanks for that, Warren.
I'm very glad to be able to say so, thank you.
Can we move on to managing the town's reopening? Verbal updates from all. Shall we start with you, Mary? That's a no then, is it?
Mary, you're muted.
Sorry. I have a question which may be answered by some of the others, so I'll leave that until the end. If it hasn't been answered, I'll ask it then. But my update is late last night I actually had a
You've stopped.
Am I still there?
You are now, yeah.
Right, sorry. Late last night I had a request to mention something in terms of
Stopped again.
Am I still moving? Am I doing anything?
It's okay, listen, Mike, I don't know if it's just you.
Can everybody, everybody else hear and see me?
I can hear and see you.
Yeah. Yeah, Mikey, it's just you.
I don't see how it could be, because I can see her and then she started talking and then just froze and the whole thing just froze. My interweb stuff is as strong as anybody else is around here.
Sometimes mine does flicker. But I shall say for hopefully the successful time that late last night I had a request of an idea from one of the businesses, it happened to be the bookshop. And Alison was saying in a conversation about wanting to move into town and was there anybody she could speak to about an idea she had, which is something running in London whereby the council authorities there have a scheme to give free rent properties to startups and businesses that want to try it out. And they get a percentage of profit back instead. I did mention the fact that a lot of the problem is that it's private landlords. So there's no actual jurisdiction that the council had. But is there any way that the scheme could be devised whereby that would work? Mentioned also pop-ups, but we've discussed that in the past with a similar issue over who has the the control of some of the empty properties. But with the closure of a few more shops recently due to Covid, it may be an opportunity to try and resurrect that and come up with some form of pop-up scheme, encouragement for startups, et cetera, or businesses that want to move further into town.
Is that not a question of somebody interested in this approaching the various landlords of empty shops and seeing what they think about it?
You mean the individual concern going round yourself to see if anybody is
The vacant shops have got balls in with contact numbers and so forth and that, isn't it?
Yes, but she was talking about not just her doing it just for her personally, but for other people like her as well, so it would be a coordinated effort rather than just her trying to satisfy her own need.
Do you or does she know of any others that are similarly interested?
As I said, it was late last night when this was first muted to me, so I haven't had a chance to discuss any thing with anybody else yet.
Well, you know, I think it's a damn good idea and it's worth trying, but as you said, Mary, the town council's got very little input to this, if any at all, other than to offer words of encouragement.
Right. I mean, shall I just try and put out a question again to the town, to the other businesses to see if there is any interest? Or if anybody knows of anybody that would like to start that up?
Well, if the bookshop owner has expressed interest and said that there are others considering it, ask her who the others are and get her to coordinate them and do the necessary, I would suggest is the way forward.
I shall feed that back.
But I think you could certainly say that although we can't help because of the nature of the landlords and all the rest of it in the town, the town council is pretty supportive of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else to report, Mary?
Not for the moment, no.
Okay, who else has got something to report? Anybody? Does that, no?
Sorry, Charlie's waving his hand, I was muted.
Oh, is he? Oh, okay, go on, Charlie.
We talked a bit about parking at the last meeting. And I was at that point a little frustrated that the council, well, we wanted the council to have free parking to encourage people in. The council then did announce that it was going to have free parking, but didn't say for how long. And then a few of us pointed out this made it quite difficult to encourage people to come to use the free parking if you didn't know, if they turn up and then the free parking, you're gone. But anyway, we do now know that the free parking's been committed to till the end of July. And I just wondered whether it's worth kind of making an effort to kind of encourage people and to to post from the town council that free parking is available until the end of the month to encourage people to come in. And it may be extended further than that, but we do know that it will be at least till the end of July.
That is only Cornwall's Meadow, isn't it? Because Stratford Fields and Weston Avenue are free anyway.
That's right, yeah. But, you know, as we know, the parking charges in Cornwall's Meadow have been, you know, people are engaged in that particular debate, so I sort of think that it's the kind of narrative that we, that could be got out there from the town council to say, just to highlight, you know, come and shop.
You think it's better coming from the town council rather than the car park owners, do you?
I think we can all get involved in this, can't we?
Warren has a hand up.
Go on, Warren.
Well, I think it'd be great if some of the shops also promoted the fact that it's free parking during July. Not everyone knows that, it's a great USP. So, you know, it's definitely something worth promoting during the month. Because, you know, the parking charges could have started today, but they haven't, they have been held off for another month, so that's really positive.
Okay, can we do that, Paul? Can we put out a press release?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Anyone else with anything to report? Thanks for that, Charlie.
Feel free to thank the councillors if that was relevant.
I just said, thank you, Charlie. Do you want it in writing? I'll send you
Broadcast on the internet will do, thanks, Mike.
We're always grateful for your efforts, Charlie. Jeez. Anybody else got anything to report?
Paul, I've sent you a message that Lauren has sent to me. I don't know if you want to read it out or I can. She's apologised for not being here, obviously she's quite far into pregnancy, so she's a bit tired out, so she's passed a message on about some of the stuff that she's been doing. Did you want to read it, Paul? Were we allowed to do that in the meeting?
Dean, do you want to read it? I'll take the town council afterwards for a bit of variety.
Yeah. And so Lauren said apologies for not being there. If you get the opportunity, could you just let the group know that Love Buckingham has continued to support open businesses throughout lockdown and the series of business reopening posts I've done had a really good response. The first alone reached five and a half thousand people and have over 2.1 thousand engagements, including over nine hundred and ninety click-throughs to the businesses featured. These were a collaboration with a local photographer, who I'm also trying to give a foot up through, I don't know what it means, local business exposure, as she's just starting out, so it's just a report on that. I watched with interest the photographs that have been posted up on various social media channels, and I think it's had a really positive impact on how towns perceive our local businesses and also making those local businesses feel part of the community and and kind of celebrate their reopening. So I think it's a really positive thing they've been doing. But that's Lauren's update.
Mary has a hand.
I have a comment on that last one.
Just a minute. Dean, could you forward that to Paul so that we can get a detail in the minutes?
Yeah, I just, I sent it before I read it out, yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. Sorry, Mary.
Fine. Just on the last update about the photography competition or the posting, sorry. The photographer's going to be putting together a little montage video of all of the posts that she's made with all the businesses' pictures, which will go out Friday or Saturday. I think she's finished her doorstep business posts for the moment.
Yeah.
Although I think the beauticians will have a second bite at the cherry because they have obviously not been able to give an opening date yet.
The witch, the optician?
Beauticians.
Beauticians, oh. No, they're kind of stuck, aren't they? Anybody else?
And just from a university perspective, just to let you know that the plans are for the university to open from September. And so you'll have an influx of new students coming to us from September, which hopefully we can drive into these town centres to use the local shops and retail outlets and more will be open by that time as well.
Okay.
And
Ruth's trying to get into the meeting, but has problems with the password, so I've just reminded her what it is and we'll see if she can join us. Yes, Charlie?
Really a question for Dean, actually. With the reopening of the university, you're going to be largely teaching remotely. And do you think the numbers actually coming to Buckingham will be broadly similar at the beginning of the year or could that change?
Very good question. We don't know. We're going to be impacted by the, probably a reduction in international students because of the perception of travelling at the moment, but we're hoping for the best and see what happens. We will be doing a kind of a mix of blended and on-campus learning, so, sorry, online and on-campus learning. And the medical school won't be reverting back to on-campus learning until January. So the majority of cases, it will be a mixture, but from January probably we'll see a lot more on-campus learning. And we're giving the students a flexibility to make the decision to stay at home if they feel it's safer and less risky for them to do so. But we don't want them to feel that they can't come to Buckingham and we don't want them to feel that Buckingham doesn't want to welcome them, so.
It's very difficult.
Are the numbers about as expected?
The numbers are very, it's very difficult to tell what the numbers are going to look like. We're expecting them to be significantly lower for obvious reasons. But we'll benefit from having a twice yearly intake, so we've got the January intake and hopefully our figures will be a bit more promising in January than they will be in September.
Okay, good.
Keep our fingers crossed and keep positive.
Yes, absolutely. Any others? Anybody else?
Do you want me to do a town council update, Mike?
Yeah, okay, just before you do, Paul, Ruth's been trying to get in with the password that was on the agenda and can't you won't take for some reason or the other.
I've messaged her and Louise has as well.
I think that she's not on the computer anymore because she hasn't responded to my last email.
Is there a known reason? Is this a design feature of Zoom? Yes, Charlie.
I'm wondering if she's got the typo in the meeting ID, so that the right password is not matching with the wrong ID.
All right, talk amongst yourselves then and I'll see. No, she's followed the ones from the email convening this meeting and that's the one that I went in with, so.
If she's trying to copy and paste it in, that can sometimes cause a problem. Sometimes you actually, sometimes you need to actually physically type the password in rather than copy and paste it.
Yeah, you have to take the space off at the end.
Yeah, that's the, I mentioned that to her.
All right, I'll do her another quick one. Any other reports? Paul, you wanted to go ahead with yours?
Okay, so from the town council service point of view, the tourist information centre will be opening on Saturday. And play areas will open on Saturday in line with government guidance. With lots of posters giving advice about keeping distance and washing your hands afterwards and those kinds of things. On the basis that if we didn't open them, we think people would use them anyway, so it's safer to open them with appropriate advice than keep them closed and then Lays Hill Community Centre will be open from Monday. The use will be fairly limited because we can't do any of the usual sports activities in there and every hire has to convince us that they can maintain current guidance. But I anticipate that will become gradually more used. Lots of the Lays Hill hires don't really want to come back in September, so September will be the biggest target for them. And the other thing to report back on is the work we've done with Buckinghamshire Council around the town centre itself. So we spoke about this at the last meeting, we've spoken about it at town centre and events committee, we've spoken about it in workshop town councillors. And really the end result of that is we put up a load of signs around town, which we've seen advising people to keep their distance. We haven't put what the distance is, which was lucky because it changed after we put them up, and stickers on the ground. We haven't put in a one-way pedestrian system because it would be too long and I don't think people would use it. We haven't shut the high street because it would be expensive and it's been counterproductive in places that happened anyway. So really, it would be safer if we had a crossing at the bottom of Morton Road, so I think that's still on the list of things we would push forward, but certainly there should be, there's an S106 funding allocated towards a thing in the middle of the road, and I've just spun the word for it, refuge. So after much thought and effort, it might appear that we haven't done that much, but the things we haven't done, we haven't done for good reasons. I would say, and certainly Buckinghamshire Council have always been open to us coming back and saying, actually, we want something else and want something more, but there's nothing anybody's suggesting at the moment that would make things better. I think businesses want people to be driving through the town and be able to park in the town. So making it harder to drive and harder to park could well be counterproductive. One of the other conversations we had was around, should we put tables out for businesses? The government are making it easier to apply for table licences and street licences. And the Buckinghamshire Council are working out how to do that and make it easy because you need a table licence for your planning commission as well. But certainly, many businesses want to pursue those things, I'm sure the town council would support them in an appropriate place, as with Buckinghamshire Council. But it'd be far better for businesses to do that for themselves and manage it themselves and us try to put out tables and then work out whose tables they are and how we are going to come to them.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Any other verbal updates? If not, we'll move on to review the arrangements that are in place. Paul, do you want to lead on that?
Well, I think I'll just describe the
You do, yeah.
So really
I have to say that the arrangements for Lays Hill, I've been looking at the risk assessment this afternoon and the arrangements there are very detailed and quite impressive. And somewhat arduous, but we are where we are. Similarly, the playground ones, we've got the risk assessments for them as well. And I noticed when I was down at the market yesterday, that people are still observing the safe distance. There didn't seem to be too much problem over the pinch point at Clay's. People tended to be crossing over the road by the cattle pens or on that hellish corner where the paper sticks out a bit opposite the old jail and going up Market Hill and so forth, so I think things are working reasonably well as best they can in a town with our oldie worldy layout. Right, do you want to move on with the survey of businesses, Paul?
Yeah, so to remind you, we were keen to get feedback from businesses on things we could do in the town, but also to help businesses promote what they were doing coming out of lockdown, if their opening hours were different and they got new arrangements and those kinds of things. And we also offered anybody who filled in the survey a pack, which we put together with help from Retail Revival. They were looking to do some kind of project in Buckingham, similar to what is in Princess Risborough. We did a press release on that, we social media did quite heavily, Mary put it out through her network. We've had four responses to that survey.
Which? Four.
Yeah, none of which said we'd like a Princess Risborough type project. It has been difficult to engage with businesses, I think. Now, obviously, some of them just aren't there, so you can't some of them are very focused on getting through the day and working out what they're doing, so why would they bother talking to anyone else because that's what they're doing? Obviously, Lauren has had more impact than we have. And that's not for lack of effort on our part. So that's where we are. To be honest, I think our, the town council's focus at the moment is on getting the new website up and running and working with businesses on that. Once that's there, part of Emma's role will be to engage with businesses going forward and see where we go. But the survey has not resulted in a, this is what the businesses say, people demanding us to do stuff.
Thank you, Paul. We'll move on then. We'll move on then to Louise and an update on Buck's floor.
Hello, do you mind if I have a screenshot? I did a little presentation.
Oh.
So basically, it's been more or less exactly a month since we launched that app. And it went really well. So the launch itself, we had a really high level of traffic going to the app in the first day. Most of that traffic came from social media. We had 500, well, more than 500 people try and use the app on the very first day. We were supported by lots of different groups on social media. The partnership with the National Lottery Heritage Fund has been great throughout this. They always support our social media posts, but also Bucks Culture, the archive, lots of community groups like Love Buckingham, the university. Our twinning group in Nekirkenflen has been advertising Buck's floor in Germany for us, as well as local users and quite a few local businesses. So that was good. So that's some of the coverage we had in various places. We also had quite reasonable coverage from the media. We had 30-second radio spots being played all week on BBC Radio 3 Counties. They were particularly interested actually in the virtual mode and the fact that you could access it completely from home if you were isolating. So I think that that approach we took for the original launch to say you can use this completely from home, you don't have to come to Buckingham at the moment, was really successful. There were a few conversations I had with journalists that didn't pan into anything at the time, but they said that they would do something later when we could have an event. I think we've gotten a reasonable chance of getting ITV out to an event later in the year. And the one issue, if I was to pick something out on the day, was that a few people struggled with how to download the app. Obviously, when we were doing the testing process because of because of the entire situation that we were in at the time that it launched and because exercise was quite limited, the number of, most of the testers that we had were people that we kind of knew or that were connected through the council that we were getting to test it. And so we missed on just that first user-friendly thing of this is how you download it. And so we corrected that. The developer and I corrected that straight away on the first day. We played with a few different things, fixed that. And we haven't had that comment since. So just to bring you right to the beginning, the actual grant funding is to do this specific project, which includes developing the app, including young people and local residents in producing the content. We've done all of that. Obviously, ensuring that we acknowledge them in everything that we do, which we've done. But it also is delivering a community event to promote the app. We haven't been able to do that because of the restrictions on public gatherings. We still aren't quite there yet, but I would hope that we will be there by the end of the year. If we aren't there by the end of the year, I get the impression that, from speaking to our contact at the Heritage Fund, that they would, potentially they could extend the project to give us more time to do that. Or if that wasn't going to be possible, we could look at changing our, making a change to this original approved purpose. I don't, I think that they would probably prefer that we extended than not do it at all, and that would be my preference too.
I think we can agree that an extension would be a good idea, Louise.
Yeah.
Given the circumstances.
Yeah, and I don't think it'll be a problem to get that. And so specifically for our project, we have a variety of project outcomes to do with what we wanted people to get out of the project. The main one that all Heritage Fund products have to fulfil is that a wider range of people need to be involved with heritage. The few other criteria here, some of which we've done, some of which are in progress and some of which we'll work on later. But, sorry. So because of that, one of the things that we included in that app is things like audio versions and activities, which mean that we have the information coming back to know that people are engaging with the actual heritage content. They're not just going for a walk and taking a picture. They're doing the activities and they're listening to the audio that we've created. We're also gathering data to build into our evaluation. We're doing that with in-app questions at the beginning. They're completely optional, you can skip them if you want to. We're just asking a maximum of two questions at a time and we'll rotate what those questions are so that we make sure we cover all of the different information that we need to have about who's using the app and what they're getting out of it. So the first thing that we asked was how much people knew about Buckingham heritage already, because that's our primary aim with the app. And it's been really positive because when we originally, well, originally back in July when we did, gathered a little bit of data at an event to make the argument that we should get this funding, we asked general random members of the public what they thought they knew already and whether they'd be interested in the app with the aim to create something that people who didn't know very much would find appealing. And I think that that's definitely been proved to be true because the vast majority of the users for the app have said that they don't know very much at the moment. They know some or they don't know much. But we're not getting so many people who already think they know lots, which, yeah, which means we designed something which fulfilled the purpose we wanted it to. How many people have used it? We've had 950 plus unique IP addresses accessing the app in the first 34 days. So that means probably well over 1,000 people have actually used it because if you think in a family group going to do the walk, there would be maybe only one or two people accessing it on their phone and then other people taking part as well. We've also been asking in this first stage how old users are. More than half of the users are under 45. That's quite helpful in terms of the spread of different offerings we have in the town. We know that we've created something here that appeals to younger users, actually even under 25, which is so up to 17 and under 25, we're getting good figures for those as well. Which is quite a hard, hard market sometimes to appeal to. Some of the pictures we've had from people who've been using it in the first month. Different people exploring. And so how have users been finding the app? On the first day, the vast majority of people were coming through social media, mainly Facebook. It was a huge group of people who came from Facebook, our social media posts there, to access the app. Over time, we're having a lot more users coming from elsewhere. That's really good to know because it means that users have downloaded the app or if they're searching for the app, they're finding it straight away. It means our search engine optimisation is working well. And that's really good for us long term as well because it means that we're not, although the social media accounts for the app are important, they're progressing the way we want them to, to be supportive and not not be accessed. So route data so far, we know that more than 1,200 routes have been opened by users, but low numbers of route completions. I've spoken to a digital marketing specialist through the Heritage Fund about this. The main thing that they picked out was that probably what's happening is people are thinking, that looks really good, I want to do that. They're opening it up and having a look. And then maybe they're forgetting to come back. And so one of the key things we now have to do is encourage users to come back later. So we know that it's appealing and they want to use it, but we need to encourage them to come back and use it another day. There are a few things that we picked out based on feedback. So some people found it difficult to choose what kind of route they wanted to do. So maybe we need to be clearer about that. Maybe we need more shorter routes. Maybe we needed to, as we create new routes, expand on the popular ones. Maybe we needed to put more emphasis on virtual mode for people that didn't realise that was happening. And maybe we needed to make the, for some routes, the footpath that people need to follow a bit clearer. The reason we didn't do that in a lot of the original routes that we put on is that they don't really follow a prescribed footpath. They're explorer ones. You can come and go as you please, but for other routes, it would be, maybe could be helpful for some people.
So changes due to the early feedback.
Just on this slide, the boldest things that are already done and the other information is things that we're working on. Some of this is almost ready to go, it just needs a little bit of tweaking. So the first bit of feedback was about users who weren't really sure how to download it or weren't sure how to access the virtual mode. So we've made a lot of changes to make that clearer. We made the download pop-up clearer. We added a FAQ to the town council website, which has step-by-step instructions for doing various things. We also optimised our search engine results, which means that if people aren't sure but they search it, they find the app, they find the town council pages, they find only things that are relevant and are going to help them use the app. We're also in the process of having the app converted into a native version so it can be added to the Google Play Store. That's nearly done. It's not, before anyone else, is not going to be on Apple because it's quite a lot more demanding to do that and it's not really worth it. So another issue was monitoring social media, especially over the weekends because we don't have a staff manager, a staff member monitoring it necessarily at the weekend. So we are trialling the use of a social media manager, which I'm happy with so far. Another issue was poor phone signal in rural locations. So if you go up to Stowe, in some places the app doesn't work because there's not enough phone signal. So you can get around that. If you turn on virtual mode, it's fine, but people weren't necessarily thinking of that. So we've got a pop-up for the next update, which should be in the next few days because it's almost done. There's a pop-up that's being added to that route. So as soon as you go into it, it tells you there's low phone signal in this area and turn on the virtual mode. So users who just weren't really sure where to start. So this has been quite a tricky one to think about and I've taken my time deciding what the best thing to do was because it's hard to, when you know something really, really well, it can be difficult to pick out what someone who doesn't know it well needs to know. So we've gone with adding activity and explorer image tags with explanations at the beginning of the app. So when you first enter it, which is, we're going to use those tags a lot more to help users find a suitable route to make it clearer what the difference, which ones are ones that you will go and complete in an hour or two in the afternoon and which ones are ones that are designed to just be taken a little at a time. We're also, now that the public toilets are open, we're going to add those to the map, which hopefully will be helpful for people who need that kind of information. We didn't put them on before because we didn't want to tell people there are public toilets in a particular place when they were closed. So the last one is the meaty one, so converting initial interest into using Buck's floor later. So we're gonna, we have gone through the process of adding a remind me later button and a newsletter signup option. So like the pop-up for virtual mode, this is something that's going to be on the next upload in the next few days. And this just simply means that people can sign up to our newsletter, we'll let them know whenever we've got something new going on. And also they've got an email in their inbox so that when they go, oh, what was that app called that looked interesting? They can go and search there and they've got an email from us that we will fill with search engine friendly terms. There's also, there's work to do on social media presence. I think even though most of our initial traffic came from Facebook, it's Instagram now that's taken over as the place where people actually look at a post and then go, oh, I'll try it out. So that's the area that will need to grow. Which is fine because it's a very Instagram-friendly concept. And we're also, the building presence on local attraction review sites, which is places like TripAdvisor, but also working on relationships with social media review accounts. There are lots of them following us on social media already. I can only assume they're all planning to use this in the holidays, but haven't got round to it yet. There's about a dozen of them. So that's good. I'm sure they will eventually. So that's some of the bits we're changing. Obviously, this is just an example of a route. So Instagram, this is the industrial one. You can see that if you're thinking of it as a route that you have to do in one go, you might think, oh no, that's too long. I don't want to go all the way to the canal from the town centre. But this is actually marked out as an explorer route. So the idea is now, once this update's added, once you've gone into beginning the site, it will let you know that you, this one, these ones are activity routes. Where you go and what go, these ones are explorer routes, routes where you can, you go a little bit at a time. So what are we doing next? The next thing I'm looking at is more routes that I would like to come out over the summer. I'd like to do the Thornborough Circular Walk Path and I've been talking to some of the, some contacts in Thornborough about that. We're going to go for a walk together on Friday to map it out. We want, obviously, there's the bridge, there's a Roman tumuli, there's an Iron Age fort that I didn't know about until I was looking at it last week. And there's quite a few artefacts from that area that are at the old jail. So I would like to make that connection between artefacts that you can go and see in the old jail and where they were found, the environment that they were found. And there's a lot of sort of more ancient settlements in that area that are, you can see in a more visible way than you can in Buckingham because it's less developed. So I think that that could be a great route, even though it's not technically in Buckingham. There's food, a food route that Lauren's been working on and has passed over me to just polish off. So that's mostly ready to go. There's famous visitors I would like to do and then maybe some kind of short nature activity route for young children. This is mainly because the green route has been the most popular with families. That's the one that really appeals to them. So thinking about how we work something there, I'd really like to tie in something if we do that with just the importance of taking care of the environment, countryside code type information. I haven't entirely worked out how that will happen, but we'll work that one out. And then finally, at some point, we need to do a delayed launch event, whenever that's possible. And that is more or less it. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you very much. That's brilliant. Yeah. And I've played with it. It's good fun. Any other comments?
I think it's very good. I was just having another look at it, just while you were talking. So it's not possible, did you say it's not possible to download it as an actual app on the, on the app or it's just too expensive, too tricky, is it? Is that right?
Yeah, so you can still download it to your iPhone if you just visit the site and download it through the site. But you can't, we can't get it in the Apple Store.
When I was going through that process was that I'd done something wrong, the fact that it couldn't download it as an app that appears on the phone. So I think it might be, if there is an explanation or way of articulating that it won't appear as an app on your phone, it might prevent people from feeling like they've done something wrong.
Yeah, we can look at more information.
But I think it's really, I think it's great. That was the only, that was my only comment about it. Because you expect when it's something's called an app, that it's something that will sit on your phone as an icon on your.
Well, it should do. It should do.
It does on Android. It should do on iPhones, but I'll be honest, I haven't tried it that personally.
It'd just be me then.
So you're not getting a, an app coming?
Download and nothing came up.
But I can still use the app, it just doesn't show up on my.
You checked then in your, in your apps that it hadn't just, I did find when I downloaded it that it took a minute or two and then it appeared. So you might find it pops up in a minute.
Yeah. I'll let you know, I'll drop you a message.
So Warren, are you saying that you've actually got the app on your phone now?
No, as Dean says, on an Apple device, you just go to the website, so it's within the browser. But you do wonder, because nothing else happens, you wonder what, if you missed a step. If you're a regular Apple user, normally you'd expect the App Store to open up to then add something to your, to your phone. So you might nearly need two buttons, which you see in a lot of sites, which is have the Google download and then another one to use now for other devices or whatever is more succinct. now for other devices, or whatever is more succinct.
Look at the wording of how that works.
It's in no way a criticism of the actual, what's there. I think it's brilliant. And the other thing I think I mentioned the other day is that the way it's been promoted is brilliant. It's, I've seen it everywhere, popping up all over the place, social media, and yeah, and, and across the university promotions as well.
Right. Yeah. Just one last thing on Apple is the only, the way it would actually be on your homepage is if you, you added it physically on your phone as a homepage and then it looks like a virtual app. So there is some text you could add. So if people want to come back to it, they can then have it on their homepage, ready to come back to, much easier.
Yes. So that is. I have instructed someone to do that in the before, but I'm.
Now I do have it on the screen, but that's.
So you had to do that. It didn't otherwise work. That's odd. I'll, I'll look into that one.
Anybody else got any other comment?
Just, just delighted to hear that Apple users are struggling and. And frankly.
Yeah.
It doesn't work my BlackBerry either.
Never mind, Charlie. They'll get up to date one day.
Sorry, Michelle.
I hope not.
Okay.
So Chair, I just, I just had one other quick comment, just in terms of adding usability. On the Buckingham Town Council website, on the Visit Buckingham, there's still not, no information about it. So you might want to update the Visit Buckingham page, because the only way you actually find the link on the town council website is in the news page. Well, that's all I could find.
So this is, it's on my to-do list. Because the mobile version doesn't track the website, the desktop version of the, of our website. So that's why that's happened.
Right. Because that'll obviously help your figures. If it's on the town council website page for Visit Buckingham, then that should give a good spike for people to just find it by accident.
Right. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Covid-19 update. I have a feeling that we've, we've covered 90% of this elsewhere in the meeting, haven't we?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
No. Okay. Shall we skate over that then? TIC website.
Hello.
Yes, please.
So about a month ago, we decided to switch how we're doing it. And we decided to use Squarespace. It's £180 a year and we can change it as much as we want. And we've got full control over it, rather than someone else creating it and us telling them what to put on there. I can just go on there and put it there. It's very close to being done. It's in the proofreading stage. It will be done by tomorrow, because we've got CSG tomorrow and they're having a look at it. And then it will be launched on Saturday to go along with when the tick reopens. And I can give you a quick sneak peek if you like.
Go on in.
So this is the homepage. And you've got how to get here, a short history, and then the news and blogs at the bottom. All of the things are on the top here. I did send round a form to all, not all local businesses. I'm probably forgetting some. But I had minimal people get back to me. So I have done short explanations of what they are myself. And I've got information about them, but it is quite limited. I'm hoping that once the website gets out there and people see it, businesses will go, yes, I really want to be involved with that. Yes, let's get our information to her straight away. Because they'll like the design of it and they want to be involved. So we've got shop, we've got dine. So hopefully, all these pictures will be of the actual places, not just stock images that I've used. At the moment, they're there for a place. We've got a stay. And a WhatsApp page, which is where we could link to the Facebook page, rather than just doing it the way I have. And there is a calendar at the bottom. And I've just gone along and tried to find as many as I could. The Plan Your Visit page has got most of the information on it. It's got a list of attractions, like the shop line and stay. We've gone for a 20-mile radius of Buckingham. We've got walks and green spaces, information on the tourist information centre. We've got shop mobility and accessibility, community groups and venues, and then itineraries, which is coming soon, because we haven't quite completed that one yet. And the last thing we've got is the news and blog section. We've got two blogs on there at the moment. And then Lauren also has said she was going to get me one by the end of the week. I don't know if she'll be able to do that. Yeah, that's basically the website.
And you're going to add the Buck's Floor to it as well, are you?
Buck's Floor is under the Walks section, so the Walks and Green Spaces. You've got Buck's Floor section there. And it does link in other places as well. On the homepage, there's a link to it as well, so.
Good one. Any comments, questions, queries?
Can I just add a couple of things? That first, obviously, we've talked a lot about how we link with Love Buckingham and whether that's possible or not. The choice we took at the moment was that we needed to get something up and running for the 4th of July when the town reopens. And obviously, Lauren's been less able to engage than Chad in the past. So we've kind of cracked on and done something. So we've got a thing that's there. And if we can work more closely with Lauren and Love Buckingham in the future, then we'll definitely try and mix that in and add, add stuff to it and work with Lauren on that. But we thought it was important to get something up and running. Obviously, while we focused on the business bit, because again, for the 4th of July and Buckingham being open, that's really important. Obviously, the longer term purpose of this is also about the tourist information. So it is the online presence of the tourist information centre. That's the kind of long term vision for it. So all the intelligence that we get in the TIC, this is where putting it online, that we control really clearly. That's the.
Good. Any other comment?
Dean has a hand.
And just to say, I think that looks really good. I think it looks, it looks really well presented. And I'd visit that and think this is a nice place. I think it's, you've done really well at it. Yeah, really good, making it look good. And you've got all the events and everything on there as well. So that was just a, just a general comment to say, I think it looks very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've done a lot of good work there, you and whoever else was involved, mainly you then, I guess. Okay.
And then there was just one other, one other comment. Because they, obviously, the quality of the photographs, the stock images, you've got a very high quality. That's part of what contributes to it, making, making it look good. So I suppose you'd want to complement that with, when you are filling in the other photographs of other shops and that they're of equal quality, which I'm sure you would do, because everything else that's in there is good quality.
Yeah, I agree. Pictures are the most important thing, I think, when you're looking at a website.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it for the website?
Mary has a hand up.
Sorry. Go on, Mary.
Again, it's just a thirding that, rather than seconding, I think, of saying how good it is. Very, very nice.
Thank you.
You've exceeded the views of the, the ones that you used as a basis that you wanted away for. I think you've gone better.
Thanks.
Yeah. Good job. Okay. Next item then is chairman's announcements. The only announcement I've got is good luck on Saturday, everybody. And let's just hope that there aren't any problems that caused by this widening of, of everything. Next meeting's the 24th of September. That's it. Thank you and good night.